We call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the July 26, 2012 Upshur County Commission meeting.
The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, July 26, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Jeffron Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of July 19, 2012, as submitted. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the special meeting minutes of July 18, 2012 contested election hearing, as submitted. The approval of the canvas minutes of the primary election was deferred to later in the meeting. William Parker provided an update/status report on the establishment of Upshur County Appraisal- Assessment Advisory Board. Mr. Parker advised the commission that a meeting is scheduled for today at 4:30 p.m. with Helen Phillips, Upshur County Assessor, representatives of the Upshur County Assessor's Office, and representatives from the West Virginia State Tax Department. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant agreements and related documents with the Division of Justice and Community Services for juvenile accountability block grant awards for project number 1-1- ABG-001 in the amount of $12,711 and for project number 09, ABG-023 in the amount of $2,289. William Parker provided a review of correspondence from Seneca settlement concerning a class-action settlement of civil action number 109-CV-00139, Cathar versus Seneca Upshur Petroleum at Al. The settlement is relating to royalty payments for oil and gas leases located on the property of the James W. Curry Library and Park. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the claim form with selection of settlement option B, 50 percent of maximum settlement payment, to receive payment of $1,060. By electing option B, the commission retains the right to challenge "method of calculating royalties." After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved Kelly Michelle Page as volunteer of the Upshur County Sheriff/Tax Department. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the following volunteers for the Office of Emergency Services/ CER, Jamie E. House, Veronica Emlinger, Robin L. Pearson, Patricia R. Bailey, Heather N. Lautfi, Karen A. Cragle, and Dorothy Valdez. William Parker advised the commission that four other volunteer applications had been received from the OEM director. One was from an individual that had picked up paperwork to petition or file for the office of the sheriff. Mr. Parker advised to hold on that application until after the deadline has passed for filing and consider it a later date. The other three were from current employees of Upshur County. Mr. Parker advised to hold approval due to Fair Labor Standards Act regulations regarding public employees volunteering for their employer. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the reinstatement of April D. Smith as full-time E-911 dispatcher at her currently hourly rate effective July 29, 2012, as recommended by Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director. Agenda item employment of Brian Wayne LaFontaine was temporarily seasonal maintenance personnel, was delayed for review with Greg Harris, Director of Facility Operations. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission entered into executive session at 9:30 a.m. per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to review applications and resumes for the position of Assistant County Administrator. Present were Donnie, Tenny, Creed, Pletcher, J.C. Rafferty, and William Parker. The commission returned to open session at 10:00 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Timothy Stranko, CaCasto &amp; Chaney, PLLC Legal Counsel to the Upshur County Commission in the matter of the contested election petition or response, David D. Taylor, petitioner, v. Michael R. Keller, respondent, Ms. Lanis, 10-416, appeared before the commission and provided a review of the final order. After review and discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the final order as submitted. The commission recessed at 10:20 a.m. The commission reconvened at 10:35 a.m. Terry Joe Bennett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the commission to discuss the road name request for the Pioneer Campground in French Creek. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the road names Pioneer Road and Douglas Drive for two separate private driveways located within the Pioneer Campground property that is required to be named per the 911 addressing and mapping ordinance and as recommended by Ms. Bennett. On motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission reconvened into executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 at 11:00 a.m. to continue review of applications and resumes for the position of Assistant County Administrator. Present were Donnie, Tenny, Creed, Pletcher, J.C. Rafferty, and William Parker. The commission returned to open session at 11:45 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. The commission recessed at 11:45 a.m. The commission reconvened at 1:30 p.m. The commission met with Jacob Rieger, Upshur County Prosecuting Attorney, to discuss personnel matters. Greg Harris, Director of Facility Operations, appeared before the commission, reviewed his request to employ Brian Wayne LaFontaine as temporary seasonal maintenance employee. After discussion, due to lack of a motion, no action was taken. James Bryson Van Nostrand, Van Nostrand Architects, appeared before the commission to review and discuss construction planning for various projects. Mr. Van Nostrand discussed the courthouse HBAC system and related cost of operations. Mr. Van Nostrand discussed issues at the new E-911/OEM building and issues concerning the backup generator. Mr. Van Nostrand and Greg Harris have tested the equipment with favorable results and will continue to monitor the generator. Mr. Van Nostrand requested written documentation from the general contractor on corrective actions. Mr. Van Nostrand discussed the problem of the settling of the new E-911/OEM building on the OEM side of the building and stated that the problem was a result of inadequate compaction. He recommended that immediate steps should be taken to remedy the situation. The cost will be approximately $25,000 to drill to bedrock and install hydraulic lift jacks. Mr. Van Nostrand will pay for the work with a division of cost to be reviewed at a later date. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the recommendation. Mr. Van Nostrand will follow up to start on the project next week. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, agendas and notices of meetings as listed. Number two, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number three, meetings as listed. Number four, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following consolidations of land tracts as listed. On motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, commission approved the canvas minutes of the May 8, 2012 primary election. The meeting with Helen R. Phillips, Upshur County Assessor, representatives of the Upshur County Assessor's Office, and representatives of the West Virginia State Tax Department was postponed. Ms. Phillips will follow up with rescheduling the meeting. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the commission meeting adjourned at 4:15 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? No, I'd ask for motion to be approved as such.
Second.
On favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have Laura Metz, Executive Director, Upshur County Convention and Visitors Bureau for Annual Report. So step right up, young lady.
Thank you. I wasn't able to include our financial statements in the earlier reports, so there's copies there, and if anybody needs more, I can pick them. So you all have a copy of our July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2012 annual report. Listed on the front page, you'll see our Board of Directors, very active and involved in the Convention and Visitors Bureau process, staff, myself, and we also have a part-time staff member, Nancy White, who works in the office. Second page, you'll see just a brief letter. It's just explaining how much our organization, and even myself, has grown in the past year. We've learned so much. I mean, I feel like I started with just getting my toes wet last year, and now I feel like I really understand what we're doing, and I feel like we're really making a difference in bringing tourism into Upshur County. One of our most initial milestones in the first year that's put us in the right direction, our CBB has developed a comprehensive website. We've produced a 29-page travel guide. We've been awarded two matching advertising grants from the West Virginia Division of Tourism. We've partnered with the West Virginia Division of Tourism on various advertising opportunities throughout the past year. Our CBB has become members of the West Virginia Association of CBBS, and we've also applied for accreditation application. And we should have that within the next couple months, I hope. We've also advertised Upshur County in 20-plus national publications. We have some online advertisements that are running. And we, our target market really is within a three-to-six-hour driving distance. We recognize that most people are driving into our community, and we're a great destination for a long weekend trip, so that's where we're targeting. So it's really within our surrounding states and within the state of West Virginia, too. If you flip to the third page, we'll go over some of the marketing successes that we've had in the past year. We have developed a logo to help implement our branding through all of our advertisements. Our logo is incorporated on our letterhead, on our website, on our travel guide, on all advertisements that we have. It just helps create some cohesion between everything that we do, and again, help brand Upshur County as a destination to visit. Our website development, you'll see the logo, of course, is placed there, and a lot of our advertisements and our travel guide reflect what the website looks like. Everything really cooperates very well together. Our website really didn't get up and running until about January, so the stats that you see below are truly for six months. So next year I'll have even better report. But we've received 5,320 total visits in the past six months during last year's fiscal year. Our most popular pages have been West Virginia's largest yard sale, which kicks off tomorrow, our calendar of events page, the Strawberry Festival, our outdoor recreation page, and all the different fairs and festivals that we have. And you can see the top visiting states of our website really are within that surrounding area of West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Virginia, Ohio, and Maryland. And also, about 49 percent of the people who are visiting our website are through search traffic, primarily through Google search. 34 percent are referral traffic, so if we have a link on the West Virginia Division of Tourism, people are clicking there and it's referring them to our website. So 34 percent of the people are getting to us that way. And then 17 percent is direct traffic, where they're actually typing in our specific web address. Next page, you'll see our travel guide, which again, very much reflects our website. The travel guide right now is 29 pages. We have distributed 16,678 travel guides in the past year, and those have been sent out to all of the different West Virginia welcome centers. It's been distributed to travel shows throughout the country, requested materials. If we have an advertisement in a publication, if somebody fills out a reader response card and wants more information, we fulfill that request with our travel guide. Different special events within the community and throughout the state, and also our local businesses, hotels, and regional restaurants and businesses also. 29 pages, we use, I would love for it to be a full directory, but we really try to highlight the main points of our county. We've got a really great motorcycling map in there. West Virginia is really well-known for motorcycling routes, so we've connected our county to six other counties surrounding us. So we're trying to work regionally in that, too, but still highlight Upshur County. And just another update on the travel guide, we will be having an additional 10,000 printed within the next month or so. So within the next month, we'll have 30,000 in production. Next page, Facebook has become a huge marketing opportunity for us. Right now, it is the third-highest hit generator to get people to our website. It's absolutely amazing to see how many people are interacting with us on Facebook. So you can see a few stats. As of the end of last fiscal year, we had 194 likes on our page. You can see other stats, 23,581 people actually saw the different posts that we made. 1,400 people actually clicked on our different posts and gained more information from all the things that we added on Facebook. So it's been very successful. We try to post on our Facebook site at least once a day. Sometimes, if there's a lot going on, we'll post at least five times a day, but we're very active on that. At the bottom of that page, you'll also see just a sample of different advertisements that we've done. This one ran in, I believe, budget travel. And we try to just stick with a simple photo that really shows off our main street or our countryside of Upshur County, and then a really great description of the combination of small-town charm on Main Street and then the great outdoor recreation opportunities we have in southern Upshur County, too. Again, you'll see some examples of advertisements that we've run, and you'll also see a list of publications and websites that we've advertised on, Washington Post, West Virginia Living Magazine, the 2012 West Virginia Travel Guide that's produced by the West Virginia Division of Tourism, and a lot of other publications. The next page just lists a few other achievements. We have, again, become members of the Association of CBBS, and we should be accredited soon. The two advertising grants that we received from the Division of Tourism are just now wrapping up, and we were actually just within the past month awarded two additional grants. And those are all reimbursement-based grants, so it's great for us to get that money back into the county. We participate with the West Virginia Department of Commerce reunion kits. People throughout the state can register and get some free stuff for the reunion, so if anybody's having a family reunion, let me know and we can get you a reunion kit. We've produced group tour packages. As organizations like the Division of Tourism, the Association of CBBS, they go out and they're able to work national travel shows, and through our membership with those organizations, we can have a presence Upshur County by sending our travel guides. So we've created group tour packages for those different travel shows and have sent out information directly to people who are interested in things that we have to offer. We have implemented an advertising grant program for our local businesses and fairs and festivals. One of the most recent successes was the blast from the past weekend. They, the group, truly, they were amazing how much, how much they put into the fair, and they were very proactive, but we were able to provide $750 in advertisements for them after they applied with our organization. So we hope to encourage our local businesses, our local fairs and festivals, to utilize our resources to help advertise. And we've also created an Upshur County Pride Seminar to educate our local businesses and our local citizens, all of the different things we have to offer in Upshur County, and to recognize how unique we are. And looking ahead in our upcoming year, some of the main highlights that we're going to be focusing on, the West Virginia Wildlife Center, it's an extension of the Division of Natural Resources, and we really want to, we want to capitalize on that because it's such a unique attraction. I don't think there's anywhere else in the state that really has that facility. So we want to work more with the West Virginia Wildlife Center. We want to work more regionally. Our surrounding counties, if people are coming Upshur County, they're visiting Lewis County, they're visiting Randolph County, they're hitting Webster and Barber. So we really want to create a specific advertising campaign for a regional market. And we also just really want to take advantage of the Department of Highway signage system. Right now, I think we lack a lot of directional signs, and that's something probably this fall we'll start researching and trying to coordinate more signs to direct people to Upshur County. And then at the end, you'll see just some miscellaneous facts. We have approximately 252 hotel rooms. Some of our larger hotels are operating on full capacity. Some of our smaller ones are more at like 40 to 50 percent. So we're strong, but we still have an opportunity to fill all of those rooms. And then you can see where we've distributed our travel guides, and largely, it's been to welcome centers and special events. Do you all have any questions?
That sounds like you've been busy.
Absolutely.
It's, it sounds like a lot of improvements in the CBB, and certainly appreciate all the work you're doing and all those that are involved in helping. And I think there's a lot of opportunities to get the word out of how great Upshur County and Buchanan is and all the events here, and this is, this is a good venue for that. So we appreciate all you're doing, and the gentlemen have any questions or comments?
Now, you and the board are doing an excellent job. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I echo those, I kudos, but also, has any consideration been given to developing what I call a community calendar? It may be something that you've already addressed, but specifically, I'm referring to a number of times when we have different organizations having events, they overlap each other. For example, I specifically recall last year, on several occasions, you had, like Pancake Breakfast, sponsored by different organizations for different causes, held on the same day at the same hours. And that seems to cause a conflict, people who like to support their community organizations having to select like, you know, which one they're going to patronize on a particular day. Has any consideration been given to try to coordinate those types of charitable organization events so that they don't overlap, or that they can be scheduled in such a way that everybody gets a fair opportunity to be patronized by the public?
That's a constant battle, because everybody, you know, they're so focused on their event that it's hard sometimes to, to open up those lines of communication. One of the best community calendars that I know of is the Chamber of Commerce calendar. They send out a weekly newsletter, and they really incorporate some of the smaller local events that we might not necessarily pick up on. And, you know, I know that if anybody wants to be on their listserv of receiving that calendar, but as far as reaching out to everybody, it would be wonderful. I don't know how far we can go on that.
It takes everyone's cooperation.
Exactly.
It's not just your effort or the Chamber's effort, but...
But it's putting everybody together, but I think...
Organizations themselves have to recognize that it's in their benefit to coordinate or try to cooperate with the Chamber.
We'll work more with the Chamber.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question back here.
I would like to thank you for all the coordination that you've built, especially with the Department of Island, the city, and all that, and getting us the grant. I really appreciate it. I mean, I'm not responsible. I really do appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Jerry. It was, it was really fun to work with your group.
And you would drop anything to talk with us whenever we come in unannounced.
It's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, our next scheduled appointment is 11:15, so we have some other items here to look at. First one is approved resolution changing the control of cable television franchise agreement from Sequel III Communications II LLC to Nestpresso Acquisition Corporation. Will you elaborate on that, Mr. Parker?
We received a correspondence and a booklet that they're required to file with the HCC, and it would be in line with previous resolutions that we've done and approved and completed for moving control of a cable system and the franchise agreement to the new firm.
So we're just moving from one to another, approving that move, right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on that, gentlemen? No, I'd ask for motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
On favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Authorized President sign loan documents for Progressive Bank related to purchase of law enforcement vehicles.
Sheriff's in the process of completing those purchases, and Ms. Tenny from Progressive Bank is requesting the approval of the commission, just to know who's signing and et cetera.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the President to sign the loan for the law enforcement vehicles?
Second.
On favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have an invitation to open house for Elkins Office of Workforce, West Virginia. They open a house at their Elkins office Friday, August 17, from 11:30 to 1:00. And we have the Upshur County Sheriff's Financial Statement, page 20. Any comments, concerns on that, Mr. Parker?
Of course, it's the end of the fiscal year, the one for June of 2012. I'll be working on some budget revisions, so if the commission would have any particular areas they would like to review, you can let me know, and I can have that, so when I bring that within the next week or two. But General County Fund, as you gentlemen may recall, we had budgeted $250,000 as a carryover balance, and it's seven, just over 750, so there'll be an additional 500,000 or so there. I know we need to put some more in the capital projects areas. I know we missed a couple of line items, one being postage that I can remember right off the top of my head. We didn't have enough in that line item that I've discovered. But other areas, we'll be putting, you know, some over to the rainy day fund and distributing, you know, to the courthouse areas of the General County budget. Cold Severance, we had budgeted $75,000. It was $198,000, so another $120,000 to distribute to the budget, and of course, most of that goes for utilities or supplies and et cetera, so it'll be there to cover those costs and then roll over to the following year if need be. Other than that, Mr. Tenny or Commissioners, if there would be other questions?
So the, actually, the last column, the balance per book, is actually what the carryover balance is?
That was the cash balance as of the end of the month for all, for all the various funds.
Right, and that takes into account all expenditures. So that would be the true and actual balance that would carry over to next year.
Yes, that was, that covers the outstanding checks that the sheriff shows, the outstanding for that month that had not, hadn't cleared the bank but had been issued, so that's their cash balance that they show.
Okay, any questions or comments, gentlemen? Okay, financial reports, we've got all that, debt, Cold Severance.
More of just the same information.
Same thing.
For General County Fund, just, you know, for each fiscal year, you can, you know, see the trend or, for General County and Cold Severance. Cold Severance, of course, being much more erratic than General County. Page 24 versus 21, you'll see the difference from fiscal year of Cold Severance versus the General County.
Well, we have janitors and notices of meetings and minutes, meeting minutes and financial reports.[1797.36] And that looks like unless there's something else, shall we, our 11:15 appointment? I'm sure we have paperwork, don't we?
That would do.
Okay, well, we will start on that, then.
I have a question.
Right ahead.
How many dollar enforcement vehicles are you purchasing, and how much is the load?
Right now, we're at, we're at three is what he's purchased so far. The overall will be four. With, for the vehicles, it's approximately just at $100,000 right now for the three vehicles. He has to get some equipment for them, and then he's also contributing some money, Mr. Miller, Sheriff Miller's contributing some money from his concealed weapons account that he discussed during the budget process, $7,000 to $8,000 to help with the cost. And then the other vehicle I think he'll be purchasing will be a Ford Taurus, I think is what he's looking at, an all-wheel-drive Ford Taurus. So, but that'll be later, this month or next.
But that's all together in one loan?
They will be going through the same, this, this funding right now is, that $100,000 is for the three, three vehicles plus the equipment.
Okay, any other questions from any of the distinguished press or visiting dignitaries? If not, we'll break to start doing some paperwork.